Twenty twenty four and it is now seven oh one P M. The rules of speaking, anyone wishing to speak is asked to click the raise hand icon online. And when recognized by the chair to address comments to the chair. Speakers are encouraged to keep their comments under two minutes. And those giving reports are encouraged to keep their reports under three minutes. Please ensure your microphone is muted unless you are speaking. Please state your first and last name for the record before moving into your comments and questions, et cetera. Written testimony may also be submitted via email using the contact information listed on the Neighborhood Commission Office website. Please silence all electronic devices. Note, the board may take action on any agenda item as required by the State Sunshine Law Hawaii Revice Statutes, Chapter ninety-two. Specific issue not listed on this agenda cannot be voted on unless properly added to the agenda. You can find an archive of handouts and reference material concerning the Kalahi Valley Neighborhood Board number sixteen online at Google Drive. Be links, you can ask me more about that as well. But we'll move on to city monthly reports, so Honolulu Fire Department.
Captain Delhaque Park representing Kalihuka Fire Station. Here are the monthly reports for February statistics. Fires, we had two structure fires. Emergencies, we had forty-eight medical emergencies and five motor vehicle crash or collisions. Safety tip for the month of March, smoke alarms save lives and are important part of a home fire escape plan. Properly install and maintain smoke alarms give occupants early warning to get outside quickly. Install smoke alarms outside of each or inside of each bedroom and outside the sleeping areas in the hallway. And on every level of the home, even in basement if you have one. Keep smoke alarms away from the kitchen or bathrooms to reduce false alarms. Test all smoke alarms once a month, press the button to ensure the alarm is working. If the smoke alarm requires an nine volt battery, please change it every year. Replace smoke alarm units every ten years or sooner if they do not respond properly. And that's the safety tip for the month. We have our stats, you have any questions?
Thank you so much. Are there any questions from the board online or in person? Seeing and hearing none? Any questions from the community online or in person? Seeing and hearing none. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Up next is the Honolulu Police Department.
Hi, good evening. I'm Lieutenant Kiony Hong from the Honolulu Police Department, working out of the Kalihu Police Station. For the stats for the month of February twenty twenty-four. For burglaries, there were two compared to three in January. Motor vehicle thefts are also two compared to three thefts. There were seven compared to six. Car break-ins, there were two in February and seven in January. They did add some other stats for us to read off. Robberies, February and January, there's zero. Aggravated assaults, there's zero in February, one in January. Sexual assaults, zero in February, one in January. And simple assaults, there's zero in both February and January. For the month of February, however, there is a case of notoriety. It was attempted murder in the second degree. It occurred near the guard shack by the Kalihu Valley Homes off of Kamakamea Fourth Road. The public information highlight says two adult males were arrested without incident for attempted murder in the second degree. After they fired a semi-automatic firearm at an adult male sitting inside of his vehicle. The males were located and detained. Both males were positively identified and arrested. So that occurred on February tenth at around six forty P M. There any question, or I'm sorry, total calls for service for the month of February was six hundred seventy-two compared to five hundred eighty-two in January for the area of covering this neighborhood board. There are any questions, I'm available at this time.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions from the board online or in person, Mr. Franklin?
Good evening Lieutenant. Lieutenant, Lieutenant Tiko, I think I'm saying that right. We had a sexual assault at Leehula Street and he said that he would get back with us to let us know if it's a familiar rape or if it's a the suspect is still outstanding and we need to be worried about it.
Okay, let me check real quick. That was for would have been for January, correct?
It was in January.
Okay.
On the twentieth.
January twentieth. I have one here. Right now it's marked confidential, but let me see if there's another way I can just see if there was a highlight for it.
Yeah, we just want to know if the suspect is outstanding or if she knew the suspect, so we need to be on guard in the community.
I'll find it for you. See. I found it. Yeah, based on the public information appears that these two met at a nightclub and then sexual encounter occurred that was not consensual. So at this point, yeah, no arrests have been made at that time. I'm not sure if it's marked confidential, so I can't look any further.
No, that's um, it's a familiar rape. She knew the suspect. The last question, the carjacking in Kalihu, you have anything on that?
Um, do you have? The date or?
I don't have the date because it's not on our chart for the month and I don't know why. But it was in the news that someone got lost in Kalihu, which, you know, could be the truth or not the truth. And while we're sending his car, somebody opened the door, put a gun to his head. The suspect was taken into custody and the car was recovered. I'm just trying to see if that was the, did he know the suspect or was it some kind of deal that went bad and Kalihu got blamed with a carjacking?
I see. I believe if that's the same one, it happened in San Island. But it is in my district. I'll try to look up the highlight real quick for you. Can I remember hearing about it? I know the arrest was made, but it was made in a different district. We initiated the initial, I guess, case. Let me try to find the highlight. Sorry.
All right. Thank you very much and thank you for the informed update that you presented. Thank you, sir.
Of course. Yeah, quick minute. Yeah, so now it looked like it happened actually in March. March ninth. Um, it does say it appears that a visitor from the mainland's GPS took him to a wrong location. I guess in the San Island area as he was looking at his phone to try to get back on track. So a car pulled up, a male with a handgun came out, robbed him of his vehicle. And then both cars fled the area later. It appears in the Palolo area. The stolen vehicle was located and then the male who was driving it was positively identified and arrested for the robbery. Yeah, so now it actually occurred in San Island and then the arrest was made in what we consider District Seven.
Lieutenant Hong, what time of the day did the incident occur?
Okay. On here it shows three nine twenty-four at about nine thirty-seven P M is when the initial incident occurred. And then at about midnight on the tenth, the arrests, so maybe three hours gap and then the arrests occurred.
Thank you. Any more questions from the board online or in person? Um, seeing them from the board, but any questions from the community in person, online? I saw Chris, is it Christine? Your hands up. You can come up to the mic, introduce yourself and your question, please, and thank you.
Hi, Christine Mahalona, Kalihu Valley resident. I, I just wondered, so it is a homeless encampment area in our neighborhood. And I'm wondering if we call, if we see the homeless there, I mean, is there? Can we just call the police because, because they're gathering or is there anything we can expect? Like I, I don't want to bother the police if there's nothing that they can do, but if uh, what would they do if, if we called?
Uh, it depends on what, you know, ordinances or laws that may be broken if they're trespassing. I don't know what kind of neighborhood it is, but if they're in either a park after hours, anybody, not only homeless, but would be addressed according to the city ordinances. So are they like or blocking the sidewalks, some ordinances that could be enforced? Or maybe somebody's water at their house or something that without permission, like what is the context?
Hmm, they're, they're living under a bridge, so, so of course that's, that's like city property. And it, it got cleaned out mostly, not entirely. And then, of course, they come back and gather. And so I'm wondering if, when we see that happening, can we call the police? Or should we just make a three-one-one report or, or what should we do?
Either way, if they are trespassing on, you know, areas where they're not supposed to be, especially if it's hazardous, right? Then go ahead and call. If you meet with the police officer and point out the location or maybe provide a statement that would help us in enforcement because it shows we're not just going out there picking on people, but we were notified of the situation. But yeah, if, if you want to go online too and report it, it'll eventually come to us. It's just not going to be as fast a response. They call it. Actually, like sometimes I know people call a lot if they're starting fires or something cooking. That could be hazardous, of course, to the homes in the area. So yeah, if you see anything that could be hazardous, go ahead and call. Meeting with officers is always helpful, but it's not necessary or required.
Okay, so, so short of like outright criminal or hazardous, then, then there's not much the police could do at like at the moment.
Yeah, unless there are on view violations, like I said, the trespassing or something we see that they're not supposed to, maybe even criminal littering, right? If they have garbage all over, but yeah, otherwise we have to enforce an ordinance that's already on the book.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Ikaika Hussey, Mr. Hussey has a question online. If you'd like to.
Thanks so much. Okay, I think I'm unmuted. Thank you, officer. I, I remember hearing about a, a program a few years ago where someone in the community could call and, and, and it would, and I'm not sure what he, it wasn't, but it was not H P D. But it would trigger a, a phone call to like a social worker or something like that to engage, you know, in, in a, in, in the kind of situation that Christine Mahalona was just speaking about, you know, if there's a houseless individual. Do you know, or do you know, do you have any more information about that program, officer, that maybe we could help or that maybe we could utilize?
Yeah, so probably the program you're talking about is that H O N U, H O N U. Trying to look up what it stands for. I don't have it at the top of my head, but those were homeless outreach and navigation for unsheltered. Oh, that's probably the one. So I think the number is seven. Either seven six eight H O N U or seven two three H O N U, but I'm, I was trying to look it up. That is good. The only thing that I, from my experience is whenever you call that number, they require pretty much a police officer to do the referral. So they may not take it straight from the member of the public to refer the individual to the program. They would eventually need a police officer to do the referral. So it is a helpful program, but it's just some steps that need to be taken anyway. So for your, for your, I guess, benefit, just calling the officer straight would probably be the fastest way. Yeah, and then the officers can contact these programs once they get there if they qualify. And they're online too. You could look it up. We frequently ask questions pages about eight pages. So there's a lot of stipulations or requirements that allow the people to enter the program. Because I think it's, it's base, but yeah, there are programs. Thank you for the reminder.
Thanks, officer.
Lee, I have one.
Thank you. Um, was it Mr. Rojas? Do you have a question for H P D?
I, I just wanted to clarify what Christine was saying. Um, so the biggest problem there is when the officers or when the neighborhood eventually is present and they call the police and um the individuals that's hanging out there like cooking, um, so that would consider as hazardous, right? I mean, is it okay to just barbecue out in the street with a lot of people, officer? So would that be considered as a? Is it okay to do that on the street with a lot of multiple people on public, public street?
You know, off the top of my head, I don't know what the ordinance is, but I know that there are ordinances against starting fires just in sidewalks or maybe veget- highly vegetated areas where it could cause fires to spread. But yeah, the officer would have to look, look in the city ordinance book probably online. We have it online and they can look up a section that may apply. So if you do have problems with that, because even me, I, I don't remember off the top of my head. You can go ahead and ask for a supervisor and then it can go up the chain and somebody will be able to find the correct ordinance if there is one. If there isn't, then yeah, our hat tied, but starting fires, I believe there is one. I just don't know off the top of my head.
And, and also furthermore is um, the, they causing everyday compiling debris and also, you know, rubbish and just bringing in big items on the street. And so it's, it's collecting and it's obviously that's what they're doing. And then, so we call the police officer. So is, is there anything that you guys can do or?
Yeah, those are a little harder. Depending on if it's personal property. So there's something called S P O stored property ordinance, which is if we do arrest an individual and then they claim that as their personal property, just like anybody else, we do have to afford them the right to bring that property with them. And then they do have time to get that property. So that is a little bit more of a coordinated effort with the city, other agencies to store that property. And I believe they have thirty or forty-five days after arrest to go ahead and claim the property. So yeah, yeah, just like if you're arrested and then you wanted certain property of yours, you could take it with you. If those are personal property, we're, we're in a way liable, right? If we arrest somebody and that is their, you know, personal property and it gets stolen or something. We can be held liable for not.
So you're saying that it's okay to compile any kind of properties on the street? It can, it can.
I'm just telling you what.
It seems sound, it's, it's sounds like it, because you guys can't do anything, right? Unless.
And, but like I said, coordinated effort, it depends on how much. I just looking at how you're describing the situation. That's not every situation, but and of course.
It's almost like an everyday thing.
Yeah, if it's just garbage or whatnot, we see people throwing it or, you know, you see people throwing it. And that's why I say it's helpful when you meet, because then if you can say, you know, this person was the one that threw all this rubbish here, then we could cite them for criminal littering. But if we go there and they're in the area of garbage.
That's what I wanted to hear, criminal littering.
Okay.
Because.
You can say it.
No, no, because what they're doing is, is they, they're collecting car parts and it's so obvious they fixed car there. And it's just, you know, just, it's just compiling, it's just collecting.
Makes it easier for me. If you give me vague, I don't know.
So it's like, so I'm, I'm the neighborhood security watch there. And then the neighbors are concerned about the situation. So I, I think that's, I think that's the approach that we should take. Because that's what's going on. Yeah.
Yeah, so go ahead and call nine-one-one and if you see, like I said, violations or things that need to be addressed, meet with the officer. It's best, it helps the, the officer make a better decision. And if you're not satisfied with the decision, go ahead and ask for the supervisor and we can go up the chain and try to see what we can do to help the community.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kumala, you had a question?
I had a question, Lieutenant Hong. You know, as a citizens of the community, sometime we cannot determine if a violation is occurring, you know, when we observe homeless in our area. Would it be proper to just call nine-one-one and have the officer come out? And they can determine under what laws that these people are violating? Because you know, the questions from our community members, you know, we're not real sure if we should call or not because we don't know what laws they're breaking. Would we, would it be recommend, would you recommend that we just call and have the officer come out and determine if there's a violation?
Yeah, you know, your, your sense of course is gonna give you an idea that something probably isn't right about what's going on. So that's when you should call, right? If you feel like, you know, I think this is not right, maybe I should get the officer to come and check it out. That happens every day, twenty-four hours a day. And then we're happy to send somebody to address or, you know, evaluate the situation. But like I said, it's always best when the caller meets with the officer because then you can tell us things that maybe occurred prior to our arrival. And then the officer can make a better decision and maybe even get a statement. Because a lot of times if it's not happening in front of our eyes, but a violation was claimed prior to us getting there, but we don't have evidence or a witness to support that, then we can't really enforce it. But yeah, if you think something is wrong, most likely you can call and then get a officer to evaluate the situation by giving them detail. The more information we get, obviously it's better, right? So yeah, that, that is an option, sir.
Thank you. Are there any more questions from the community, Mr. or Mr. Yap?
Uh, yes, Mr. Hong, my name is Dana Yap and the question I had was from one of my friends that said the enforcement of the no parking between three-thirty and five-thirty is not really, really being enforced on Kalihu Street. So he just wanted to bring that up is how come people are tagged in the afternoon going home, you know, because it makes the road narrow with the buses and stuff like that. So if that could be enforced.
Okay, yeah, thank you. And then like I always say, it's good to have questions here at the board meetings, but then when things are happening in live time, maybe a few weeks ago, just tell your friend, go ahead and call, you know, call for one, that's the best way to do it. And just say, you know, there's a traffic hazard due to no parking zones. And then the officer can get out there and get some tow wagons out there if needed and clear it up then in there. And then you guys wouldn't have to wait till the board meeting, you know, because I'm sure it caused some discomfort during that time. But yeah, I also remind the officers to check the no parking zones during those times. What time was that afternoons, you said?
Yeah, between three-thirty and five-thirty, I think, yeah.
It's like the no parking zone, tow zone of traffic. I'll remind them, but also call because that helps us too. Maybe the officer checks the area. There's no cars and then later it gets busy. And they can always send somebody from a different area to check on it if, you know, it's hazardous, especially for the vehicles. But yeah, thank you.
Okay, and I believe we have one more quick question from Mr. Franklin.
L T, real quick on that parking from three-thirty to five-thirty. I, I did put in a request for three-one-one. The, the reason that officers might run into a problem is all those signs are faded. They do not, they do not say, you know, it's hard to cite them because the signs are blank. So I put a request in and maybe you can help put a request in on Kalihu Boulevard because the street sweeper comes in at that time at three, from three-thirty to five-thirty to clean that. But majority of those signs you cannot even read. They're so faded. Just to let you know, it would be hard for them to cite until those signs are put up.
Yeah, that is, that is good information to know. And then, yeah, maybe another agency needs to get involved to sign people. But we can try to send a request, but like I always say at the board meetings, it's always, not always, but oftentimes when the public asks, it could be faster than if just the officer asks, because more people asking helps.
I already put in a request, sir. I put the request in already about three weeks ago.
Oh, I'll try to. Thank you.
Thank you. And are there any more questions online and person? Seeing none. Thank you, Miss, Mr. H P D. But moving on to the next agenda is Board of Water Supply, Iris Oda.
Hi, yes, Iris, I'm, I'm online here to report on February ninth around address twenty-six forty Kalihu Street. There was a main break. And I have one general announcement. We're, the Board of Water Supply and participating city agencies are observing World Water Day on March twenty-second. This year's theme is water for peace. This internationally recognized event encourages water users across the globe to make a difference by changing how we use, consume and matter, manage water in our lives. So during this observance, we can read inspirational stories and watch videos on the global water and sanitation crisis. Find out how to, how climate change impacts our water and get conservation tips. So go to boardofwatersupply.com/WorldWaterDay and there'll be some social media channels. Go look on to that and participate on that on May, March twenty-second. And actually, it's a quick reminder about the hundred dollar rebate that I mentioned last month. It expires on April eighteenth, so please participate in that if you're going to be changing out your toilet and/or if you have a hive, then change it to a low flush toilet. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more questions from the board online or in person? Seeing and hearing none. Any questions from the community online in, in person? Seeing and hearing none. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And up next we have filing a vacancy. So there is one at large vacancy. Uh, before we had two people, Chris Luweli Maga and Michael Gotti. Did Mr. Sung, you also want to be, okay, so Mr. Sung is also in the running. So to keep it fair for today, we'll give each of you one minute to introduce yourself to the community and the board. Um, is okay, did you want to start, Mr. Sung or? Yeah, if you're ready, um, yeah. And go up to the mic.
Hello and thank you for this opportunity. Um, as you know, I'm here for Kalihu and making sure that keeping the city officials honest and ethical and also making sure that the community in general is, concerns are being heard. Um, I know some people are encouraged about sustainability and safety, which is also my concern. One thing that I do take a look at is also taxes and resources and everything that needs to be also concerned about. That's it.
Thank you. It's under one minute. Um, next, um, did Chris or Michael, either of you ready? Michael, you're closer if you'd like to do your, yeah, to do your intro. Um, one minute on the clock.
Um, hi again. I guess we're doing another vote since last time, right? Yeah, my name is Michael Gotti. I'm sort of homeowner in Kalihu Valley for the last few years and I had a few years living here as a renter as well. As a intern in my graduate program, I was, worked with John Mizuno in his office. And since then, I've been working for many years at Queens of the state and then the last several years at the V A, working with severely mentally ill in the psych ward there. Primarily a homeless population, which is sort of my specialty. Anyway, I have a big interest in social policy. I taught social policy at H P U for a couple of semesters. Very interested in the different issues that we deal with here. And yeah, would like to run for a seat.
Thank you. And then Chris Luweli Maga.
All right, hello everyone. Thank you again, Mr. Chair and Board Members for the opportunity to share a little bit with myself. My name is Chris Luweli Manga. If you don't know who I am, born and raised here in Kalihu Valley, right there on Pahula Street. Um, well, father, I have a husband and, but most importantly, I'm a citizen, as a resident of Kalihu Valley. And um, I too like, uh, my friend here, I have a vision of connecting that or bridging that gap between Kalihu Valley and our government to help ensure the, the needs of the people here in Kalihu Valley and how we could make sure that we live in a safe and a sustainable community. What a great vision to see or hear every month to see the H P D or Fire Department reporting on zeros. And I know we don't live in the perfect world, but I believe it's our Kulianna's members here in Kalihu Valley to voice our opinion and also hold the government to accountability. hold the government to accountability to help keep our community safe. Hello, thank you.
Thank you. And from there, we can start with voting. We'll take a vote. You have everyone. Oh, Chester looks like has his hand raised up. Mr. Koga or?
Yeah, I have a question now. I just wanted to point out Spencer that you know, a lot of the information provided by the candidates at the last meeting was not not included in a minute. So that was difficult. So hopefully I, you know, taking include the information about people who put their name name up tonight.
Thank you. Um, is there, oh, is there anything else or do we start to vote now or?
Can ask if there's any other residents who would like to volunteer?
Yeah, any online or in person that'd like to volunteer for at-large vacancy? Seeing and hearing none. Um, oh, um. Mr., I thought it was here. Mr. Hasi, do you have something?
Well, well, yeah, I guess I just wanted to say that, you know, we have three really good candidates and I'm really glad that that there's so much interest in this, in this one seat. And I wanted to just mention that we do also have committees that that and everyone can participate in, you know, Jay came to to the sidewalk committee earlier this evening. And, you know, I'm certain that there would be welcome interest from the other committee chairs. If if anybody else wanted to to come to the other meetings as well. So, you know, there's there's lots of opportunities to be involved and engaged in the neighborhood board process, even if you're not one of the, one of the nine people in the seats. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Well said, Mr. Hasi. Um, yeah, so even if you are a board member or not, you still, as a community together or on your own, you have the power to to come to the board meetings, committees and make a change there. So thank you. And I guess we will start to the voting now.
Okay, so to keep it simple, we'll just do first names. So James, Chris or Michael? It's James Sung, Chris Luweli Maga and Michael Gotti. Ethan Dayton, not online. Randolph Franklin. Michael. Ikaika Hasi.
James.
James. Chester Koga.
Chris.
Chris. Alan Kumalai.
Michael.
Michael. Simeon Rojas. Michael. Hernando Tan.
Michael.
Michael. And Chair Tumbaga.
Uh, I will vote for Michael.
Okay, congratulations, Michael. You have five votes, which is quorum. And congratulations, we will, we'll swear you in and get you on the board and you can feel free to grab a seat up here, yeah.
Yeah, I can do it.
We'll be swearing him in right now.
Laws, the state of Hawaii, the charter and laws of the city and county of Honolulu and the provisions of the neighborhood plan. And will conscientiously and impartially discharge my duties to the best of my ability as a member of the neighborhood board to which I've been elected or appointed.
Thank you and congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. And congratulations again, Michael Gotti. Um, next up is the presentation for opening of the Kahale in Kalii, Mr. John Mizuno.
Chair, I wanted to thank you for allowing us to do this presentation. Um, we are opening up a Kahale on Wilson Street. This is going to serve twenty-four people throughout the year. Um, these are people that were previously homeless. And I've got the person that's probably the pioneer in providing services for homeless and people in need. IHS CEO Connie Mitchell. So Connie will share with you our thoughts.
Thanks, John. And I wanted to clarify, it's not twenty-four people all one time. It is throughout the year. And so, um, we're opening a twelve-bed, actually, um, Kahale, which will serve people who have gone through and completed treatment. And it's at the same place that our vet house was at for the last ten years. But we had to move our veterans' house. I'm sorry. Oh, sorry. Okay. Um, the site is actually at our former vet house, the veterans engaged in transition, which has been there for ten years. And the veterans, they seem to be aging and needing a place that is a little bit more one level. So we had to move from that property because it has a lot of steps. But we thought, hey, this property is awesome and it would be another great place to create a Kahale. And when we talk about Kahale, it's about creating a community of people that support each other and really are getting back into a community, you know, the larger community. So there we will be hosting some people who will continue to be in their recovery. Many of them were trying to get working again and just strengthening their ability to just do the things that, you know, we all do as part of the general community and become, you know, contributing citizen again. It's supposed to be a very tranquil, peaceful place where, you know, people can just kind of think about a lot of the, you know, the things that happen in their lives and just, you know, move forward in a strong way. So, um, I'm really hopeful and I just really want to thank you for allowing us to be there as the vet house for the last ten years. And hopeful that you folks will really extend that same welcome to people who are in healing in a different way now. Any questions?
Thank you.
And I just wanted to add and make sure Connie's here, so the information's correct. I know Mr. Sung had asked about homeless services and seeing how we can be more self-sufficient. So if I'm the homeless person and I go to Connie's Wilson Street House, go make sure I'm on Medicaid. So now our Medicaid is covered significantly by the federal government. So it reduces the cost or the strain to Hawaii's economy. Second, Connie will make sure that I'm on SNAP, that's formerly food stamp program. And unbeknownst, a lot of people, four hundred forty-eight million dollars in pure federal funds SNAP monies come to the state every year. Moody's Analytics did a study saying that for every one federal SNAP dollar, it generates a dollar seventy to the local economy. So that food stamp driver for our state could actually bring in close to a billion dollars for our economy. So that's also going to help. And finally, Connie's going to make sure if I'm, she'll make sure to either get me on SSI. If I don't qualify for that, perhaps general assistance, because that's going to bring in awards from four fifty to about nine fifty for that person. And and if I'm in Connie's house, I'm paying rent. Okay, and ninety percent of Connie's participants will be working within forty-five days, I believe. So again, we're getting a person who's homeless, no longer homeless. We're going to make sure that person has Medicaid, SNAP, SSI or general assistance funding. That person's going to pay rent and within forty-five days, that person's going to be working. So that's where we're changing the the thoughts and the views on homelessness. We're trying to make them part of our society and economy moving forward. So that's why it's so important. And I wanted to thank Connie because again, you're talking about pioneers in this industry, helping to get people right, making them whole again. Connie's probably the the top pioneer in the state. So again, I just wanted to thank Connie and all that she's doing. How about a hand for Connie? And we're here for questions.
Hi, everyone. Oh, do you want to continue on your presentation or?
No, I want you to go to the questions and I'll.
Yeah, are there the other questions from the board online or in person? Oh, Mr. Gotti.
Question, so the is it twenty-four per year or will?
Yeah, twenty-four per year.
How many beds now?
Twelve. There's two houses.
Oh, two houses. Okay, right. And that's with the goal of housing
So the, I get. Correct. So then we move them out and then there's more people coming in. Yeah. So they'll have different various lengths of stay in the house. We're hoping that it's really a time where we're not pressuring them to get out, but we're really helping them to really solidly move forward after they leave the house.
Is there an expected length of stay when they're admitted?
I think probably no more than six months, but we're not, as I said, if they're not ready, we're not going to push them out. But I think, you know, the idea is that at the end of the year, we'll have turned over the bed at least once, you know, so that we have twenty-four that we've started.
And you said two houses. Is there, but it's at the old vet house or?
Correct. So there's just houses on the property.
Is there houses on that?
Yeah.
Where is that moving into Kalii or? Where's that now? Okay.
I'm sorry.
Where's the vet house? Oh, yes, sorry. Where's the vet house?
It's on Wilson Street in Kalii Valley.
Oh, okay. So it's, but then the new vet house, is that going to also still, oh, still in Kalii though? Okay.
It's more out toward, if it's still outside, but it's off of School Street. Middle Street, yeah.
Cool. Great. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Franklin, you have a question?
I just have one question. This, people are referred to your house. They just don't walk in off the street. They have to go to a program and then come to you. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Rojas, you have a question?
Yeah, how long are you guys going to be there?
Well, we want to, we want to be there for a long time. You know, the vet house was there for ten years and I think we really need more of these kinds of houses in, you know, many communities. So I really thank you guys, you know, for really being there for these folks. Otherwise, it's really hard, really hard to re-enter, you know, the community after you've gotten clean. You know, as you know, we opened a detox center on Dillingham. And we've already in less than a year, we've detoxed over a hundred people, you know, and have like an eighty percent success rate in them completing their detox. So we really want someplace for them to go afterwards so that they really have a safe landing place, you know. I also want to say that the name of the house is called Pi Pi Hole, which actually has a really significant meaning because this is rebuilding a solid foundation, strong walls that will endure for a lifetime of sober success. So, you know, we're just really excited about the ability to have this available for folks to have experience homelessness.
Thank you so much. Are there any other questions from the board? Is it Mr. Rojas? Okay, one more. Okay.
Yes, can the community be involved with your process of healing?
Absolutely. The question was, can the community be involved? You know, all of our programs, we really invite people to, you know, be there to be social supports for folks. So if people wanted to bring in, you know, like a, you know, a day where you bring food or you have a barbecue with people or a fun night, you know, with the folks over there, we welcome that because people really need to be resocialized and really have, know that, you know, they're valued people in the society and people in our community. Mr. Sung, did you have a question?
Yeah, Mr. Sung, did you want to come up to the mic or or borrow the mic to ask?
This house is in an RPG zone, right?
What is an RPG? Yes.
And will these tenants have cars and or not?
Generally not. You know, we like that place because it's so close to the bus line. And there are a couple parking spaces, you know, for people who are coming and going and stuff. But, you know, like I said, we've been there for ten years and I think, you know, we try to really clean up the neighborhood and stuff and be really nice to our neighbors and be a good neighbor ourselves.
I had the Ohana House behind my house. And yeah, that it got a little noisy and congested with cars. That wasn't you guys. But they they got evicted.
Oh, okay. And the other thing is I'll leave, you know, whenever, for our neighbors, you know, whenever we go into neighborhood, I leave my my number personally and my email so people can contact me. But we also have our manager's number so that people can, you know, ask help for, you know, if anything going on.
Thank you so much. Are there any other questions from the board? Oh, Mr. Hasi, online?
Thank you. I appreciate it. Congratulations, John and Connie, for for this opening. I was wondering if you could share where else on the island, the Kahale are, where else you're planning on on building Kahale on Oahu?
Thank you, Board Member Hasi. Thank you. So we, last month, we just opened up Winward. And we also opened up one on Middle Street. Uh, we had the medical respite in front of the Capitol. This will be our fourth. We're looking at another one in Kalii, possibly Cedar Church. We're also looking on a big island, one in Kilo and one in Kona. We already got those locations. That's seven. Um, we've also looking at a big space, twenty-three acres for a diversionary program, first of its kind, probably house over two hundred people coming out of prison, get them straight again, and then get them back into society. That's in Puna, Big Island. Maui, we've got a couple that we're looking at. And Kauai, we've agreed with Mayor Kaukami at the Mahelona Hospital to put thirty-two units in there. We're still looking for other Kahale and Iwale, Iwale, we got a hundred-bed Kahale in addition to some other units. And we're still looking for a couple more medical respite Kahale. So basically, this is statewide, Governor had asked that we do twelve Kahale before the end of the year. I did tell Governor this morning that we can make it twelve, but I told him, please don't say anymore until we get that last twelve one done and then go ahead and give a prediction of how much more you think we can do. So thank you, Board Member Hasi, for that question. That, well, it all depends. So some of them are co-ed. Um, generally males seem to, it's maybe like a sixty, forty or sometimes seventy, thirty split. It just is. But I'll turn it over to Connie because she has the racial, the gender breakdown at her place.
Actually, at this property, we're planning to have males only because, you know, sometimes there's a little drama when it makes the two. And so I think I like for, you know, that to be more, you know, the case. And I think that when people are ready to move on and they want to, you know, have more relationships and stuff, you know, that's one reason why they move out. You know, so I just want it to be a natural kind of thing, but not to, you know, invite difficulty, you know, with the population that's there.
So thanks, Connie. So for that question too, we do have like Fernhurst, YWCA, this, these, this is for women coming out of prison and they get them a job similar to what Connie does. That's all female. Right now, we're working with the YWCA, they only have fifteen beds. Used to be TJ Mahoney's. We want twenty-five or thirty-five beds. We want to get more people in. Again, this is for females only. So it kind of depends on the Kahale. This would not be considered Kahale because YWCA, they're already established. They're there. It's just people are going to be there for about a year, two years max, and they go out. So this is a little different than the Kahale that we have. But yes, it does depend on the, you know, the Kahale or the services we provide. So it varies. Thank you.
Is there any other questions? Oh. Oh, sorry, for communities?
Yeah, yeah. How does the Kahale help the community in Kalii, Kalii for that matter? Good, good question. Good question. How does that help the homeless situation in Kalii? Okay, so so I'm not trying to evade your your question. So I'm working with with Simeon and, you know, we call it relocation. Let's call it what it is, a sweep. And so we've already worked to remove some of the items in the stream. Um, phase two is we're going to come back with Simeon and our social workers. I think that's Heather, that's Hum reduction for this area. And talk to the people under the bridge, on the hillside in the Coit Park and on the the place where they have the gaming house. I think there's three or four locations. We're going to give them a warning to please leave the premises, the area. Chances are they're not going to go. And then three to four days later, we're going to come in with with law enforcement. And then we're going to have to move them. I've already talked to Sam Moku, who's the city homeless coordinator. And I know ACLU is is does not like what we're going to do. We love our homeless. We want to help them. But if they're violating the law, we're going to move them. Uh, but if they're violating the law, we're going to move them out and we're going to get them into a shelter or Kalahale. Yes, we got to remove the tents. Here's something that you're not going to believe, um, but you can ask Principal Al Carganilla from Ferentz High School. Just had a meeting with him last week. Ferentz High School has eighty-eight students who are homeless. Eighty-eight students. So I'm working with the governor to see if we can house those students on campus. But the word is the liability is too high. So Principal Carganilla had said, we'll leave the cafeteria open till eight to get the kids fed. We'll leave the library open till eight to make sure the kids can study and do their homework. But the liability is too high. So we're working with Superintendent, um, Hayashi to find an alternate site for those eighty-eight students for, at Ferentz High School who are homeless. Um, some of them may be in a tent right by Ferentz High School. So yes, that's something that we have to work on. When we clear the homeless, we don't, insanity is doing something expecting a different result. So what we have to do is work with everybody to make sure when we do the sweep, if I'm the homeless person, you get me into a Kalahale or into a shelter. And we have to use a better tracking method that I've been working with Connie and Laura Thielin to make sure they can track me so they know that truly I'm in a shelter or Kalahale. And I'm not trespassing. So I, I hope I was able to answer your question.
Are there any other questions from the board online or in person? Seeing and, oh, hearing none, but, um, oh, wait, did someone on the board? Oh, Mr. Gotti? You can, oh, you, on the mic, yes.
The referral process, is that coming out of sort of Central IHS or is? So how, what is the referral process, I guess, is the question?
So we haven't solidified it yet, but we, we, we're going to create, um, an online, uh, referral. But I think a lot of it is going through the care, um, the Hawaii cares line, you know, so that they know, you know, um, it's people who are, are coming out of treatment or coming out of, um, detox, you know, so either one, but
Oh, so it's, it's meant for post-treatment?
Yes.
Housing. Okay. So that's one of the criteria. Got it. How about coming out of the psych wards?
I'm sorry?
Is psych ward treatment that would be?
Psychiatric treatment?
Yeah, psychiatric. Psych wards.
Oh, okay. Yeah. If, um, they're coming out, that could be, but the primary, um, diagnosis would not be psych. We have a lot of people going through our detox center that has both. So we initiate, um, segments over there as well. But, um, I don't know if you know, but the Behavioral Health Crisis Center, um, was blessed just this last week, you know, in Iwale. So there is a, um, another place where, um, mentally ill folks will be able to go for MHs and, um, crisis.
MHs too?
Yep.
So like a psych ward? Yeah, I'll have to ask you more about that later. That's interesting.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the board online in person? Seeing and hearing none, but, uh, questions from the community? If you could come to the mic? Could you repeat the question?
Yeah, good, good question. The question was, have you considered the safety of the community? So this is what we had when we went to Winward to open up their, their Kalahale. The, the community came up in arms, not in my backyard. I got yelled at, uh, people accused, lot of colorful names, adjectives, but here's the point. Um, they're screened and if they're disruptive, they're not going to be in the Kalahale. Uh, there's twenty-four seven security. There's a case manager. So yes, they are screened. Believe me. So far, Middle Street, no problem, no problem. Some of the other parts on the Big Island, no problem. Hilo, again, they're against it too, just like Winward. But, uh, for this area, we're not going to have a problem. Connie does a great job. We had the vet house there for ten years, no complaints. I don't see any problem here. Um, and with, uh, Pastor Kim's Kalahale is for Kupuna. It's for anyone that's over sixty that's homeless. We're going to care for. So I, I don't think we're going to have a lot of fights from them. So we're doing our best. Uh, the last count, point time count, six thousand two hundred twenty-three homeless. We're doing our best. Insanity is doing the same thing over and over and over again, expecting different results. We're doing something out of the book. Governor Green, us, we're doing something totally different. And eventually, if we do this right, all those tents that you see lined on the sidewalks, they're going to disappear if we do this right. So what I'm trying to say is, this is Kalihi. This is my backyard. I cannot say not in my backyard. We're going to continue to open Kalahale. After twelve, it's going to be twenty. It's going to be more. And that's the only way we're going to address homelessness, or else it's going to be like the rest of the nation. It's just going to go up, up, up. So that's what we're doing. But we, we have safety mechanisms in there. Connie will do a great job. Again, ten years vet house ran, no problems. So there's no doubt, uh, we're going to be great neighbors.
Can we have a question? Mister, um, actually, Mr. Hasi says he has a question. If you could.
So John, I just want to say thank you for answering my question earlier about where you're planning to locate the Kalahale. I just wanted to flag, you know, um, that that I, 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 I don't hear places like Manoa or Hawaii Kai or Aina Haina in, in that list. Um, and, you know, it's, it's sort of like, well, it's, it's just, it's kind of a, it's a fairness thing, you know? We, we all should carry the burden of taking care of all of our people. Um, so I'm, I'm just hoping, you know, to, I want to implore that, that you and Governor will consider that.
I, I can answer that. We're, we're looking for open spaces. I've just had a, a meeting with, uh, faith-based organizations, um, the Catholic Church, um, a number of other leading pastors. I'm asking that the faith-based, that the churches take Kalahale on their property. Whether it's Hawaii Kai, whether it's Hawaii Low Ridge, whatever it is, there is, we're not picking on, the, the bottom line, not in my backyard has to change. Second, we are not picking lower income. I mean, it was planned, Hilo, we need a Kalahale there. We need a Kalahale. So, so we're not shark picking wherever there's land, and usually it's government land. Because private land, they, after putting in two million dollars of investment and infrastructure, six months later, get off our property. So that's why we usually have to work with government land, uh, state-owned land. Uh, the county governor and Mayor Blangardi have an excellent relationship, so we can do that with, with this county. Same with, same with Kauai and same with Big Island. Maui, we're still working with Mayor Bisson. Um, that's a little touchy. So we're usually targeting state-owned property on Maui. So, so that's how it's been working. But yes, we're, we're not, just because you're in Hawaii Kai or Hawaii Low Ridge, doesn't mean there's no Kalahale. It, it's everywhere we can put it in. And that's government's, Governor Green's vision is respectfully pepper the state with Kalahale. Um, so that's, that's where, so we're not picking, we're not shark picking.
And, you know, I, I think that the faith-based approach is a great idea, uh, because there's a, a real mission alignment there. And I wanted to mention in particular that Central Union Church, um, they are, you know, they've, they've, I, I've, I've talked to them about, um, their desire to have something like a Kalahale on their property. So I'm, um, I'm happy to make that connection if that's useful, John.
Yeah, absolutely. Appreciate you. Uh, we believe, Governor believes, the more we engage with churches, I mean, second greatest commandment, right? Love your neighbors yourself. So if we can get engaged with the churches, this will save a state a lot of money. And we can also use their infrastructure. A lot of the cost is infrastructure, water, sewer, um, electricity. But partnering with the churches, we think we can really get a, a handle on homelessness. But thank you. Good, good point. Thank you.
Thank you. And one comment? Miss, was, did you have the comment? Oh, Mr. Kumalai has a comment.
Hey, John, I think, uh, Kalihi, we've historically, uh, had prisons, uh, low-income housings. And, you know, it's a privilege to be a community that welcomes, uh, uh, underprivileged, uh, you know, people that are ostracized in, uh, community. So, you know, other communities don't take them. We take them. Yeah.
Thank you. And, um, I did want to note that I did make a mistake on, um, what the agenda item is. Presentation is supposed to be after resident and community concerns. So now we are asking for resident and community concerns. Uh, Mr. Sung?
Hi, my name is James Sung. This is mostly for Senator Kim and Representative Mizuna. So I'm in opposing of HP number sixteen thirty. The bill needs to be a little narrower in scope and should address the concerns while centralizing regulations. It seems risky to consolidate the permitting process to a single person rather than relying on regulations set by the counties. While I support allowing single-unit homes to become multi-unit townhouses, up to four, for additional income and increased density, this bill is premature. Not all areas in this state are ready for such density. Infrastructure considerations such as electricity, water, sewer, and transportation must be thoroughly examined. Rushing into density without proper preparation could incur unnecessary costs for both county and the state. Even the Honolulu City Council Zoning Chair Calvin Sei agrees with some of my statements. By passing this bill, Hawaii residents will eventually have to pay higher taxes because the state will spend unnecessary money on infrastructure. The state needs to work with the counties and design higher, uh, density zones. One significant concern is eliminating, uh, public disclosure, the first amendment right. The resistance, uh, from some residents, NIMBYs, who John just talked about, increases the cost of housing. All it takes is one person to stop a single project, and the project could be for the betterment of the community and the state. Yet, if this bill is passed, it removes the right to public discourse that should not be sacrificed. If you want to know who a NIMBY is in the Kalihi area, just look around this room. I'm also concerned about the short-term rental ban affecting short-term workers like nurses and teachers. During the Lahaina fire, female workers stayed at five-star hotels while the residents lived in shelters. Exceptions need to be carved out to help compensate required workers. While I agree with this concept, the county should decide on the density. Local authorities are better equipped to assess the readiness and resources of the infrastructure for such changes. In summary, my opposition of HB number sixteen thirty stems from the belief that it needs to be more focused in scope, consideration of infrastructure readiness, and preservation of the first amendment right to public discourse. Shifting the decision-making to the county would allow for a more nuanced localized approach to addressing housing challenges. Lastly, about SB number thirty-two oh two, even though I do agree with this concept, is it constitutional? If this bill is passed, I feel it's going to be overturned.
Thank you. And you had a comment, Mr. Franklin?
Yes. Uh, I'm coming in on a, a community comment. Uh, a couple of weeks ago, I was watching KNO2 News. And Eddie Dow was doing a, a story on the nightclub murders, after-hour nightclub murders, and he was doing about the prostitution in gambling houses in Kakaako and Ala Moana area. Uh, during this time, uh, Eddie Dow interviewed three separate boards about how they're going to clean up their area and what they want to do, and they're working with HPD. Well, at no time did Eddie Dow show the location of the after-hour club, the location of the murder, the location where the prostitution is occurring, or where the gambling houses are in Kakaako Ala Moana area. And while he was talking about these murders and these, uh, prostitution and gambling houses, they zoomed in, I mean, really zoomed in on a sign, Kali and Lamile Street. And he continued to talk about the murder, the rape, and, and the gambling houses. And, and, and I had a problem with it because they want, they took it away from Ala Moana Kakaako area and dumped it in Kalihi. So their viewers would believe by showing the only street sign of Kali and Lamile that all this was occurring in our area and not their area. So I, uh, wrote the KNO2 and told them it was disingenuine and it was unfair that Kali has his own problems. And you don't need to take the Kakaako and Ala Moana, uh, incidents and dump it in our lap in Kalihi. We're trying to clean up our own problems, I told them. And not once did they come at, at the gambling house they showed and talk to this board. Because this board along with our councilman Sentota Tam in HPD shed down that gambling house, cleaned up that garbage dump, and arrested the owners. So I thought it was really offensive that KNO2, uh, slandered, uh, our area for no reason at all except to keep it away from Ala Moana. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, are there any more, uh, residents and community concerns? Oh, yeah. Come up to the mic and introduce yourself.
Hello, my name is Jason Cutner and, uh, I'm a Kalihi, uh, Valley resident. Um, I'm also a member of the Hawaii Bicycle League, and I'm here on behalf of that right now. And these comments, um, are directed towards, uh, the governor, governor's office and the Department of Transportation. Um, I'm a cyclist and a member of Hawaii Bicycle League. I care about safe roads, complete streets, and Vision Zero. In July twenty twenty-three, after years of lobbying and tragic deaths, Governor Green signed Act Two Forty-four into law, known as SRTS or, uh, Safe Routes to School. Uh, it calls for the Department of Transportation to convene an advisory committee, including commu- community stakeholders, to prioritize projects and award funding in the amount of ten million dollars for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, and ten million dollars for fiscal, fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. The State Department of Transportation has no updated information on their website about the safe routes to schools. So my question is, is how can the public, public know who the committee members are, when they plan to meet next, and what projects are being prioritized for the twenty million dollars that has been allocated? Also, will these funds expire and be unspent because the committee hasn't met or yet established a framework for implementing the act, Act Two Forty-four?
Thank you so much. And are there any other, um, residents and community concerns? Oh, Mr. Franklin?
Really great for Mr. Jason. Uh, the governor representative will be, uh, uh, speaking soon, so you might want to re-ask that question to the governor correctly.
Okay, so maybe that would be a better time to, okay. Thank you. I'll try that again.
Thank you. And just in case, if you guys, um, did your residence and community concerns and wanted to go, don't forget to, if you haven't already, please sign in, um, at the sign-in sheet at this first table. I believe it's the black clipboard if you haven't already. And, um, if there are no residents concerned online or in, oh, is there one more? Could do it last since it's an event. Yeah. Thank you. Just residents, um, residents and community concerns. Are there any more online in person? Seeing none? Thank you. And we will move on to Mayor Rick Langjordi's Representative Ben Master Clark Bright. He's not here, but we do have the report that, um, Spencer can read off for us.
Yes. Hello, everybody. Um, Ben Master Bright was busy with some other things. He couldn't make it tonight. Um, but I will provide the report. Um, this month, in this month's highlights from the Mary's newsletter, which are available upfront if you want to get a copy. Um, the town hall meetings are returning. There is a number of town halls happening all across the island. The closest one to, uh, the Kalihi Valley area is K A Lee Colani Middle School, which is happening on Thursday, April eighteenth at six thirty PM. That's K A Lee Colani Middle School, April thir- April eighteenth at six thirty. Moving on to some issues that were raised at the last meeting. Um, there is a concern about, um, or there was an inquiry about a parking sign and if it could be installed near seventeen-ten Kalihi Street. This is near the Bridge Stream entrance. Um, so the Department of Transportation Services will, uh, look into it, conduct an investigation, um, and they will get back to the board sometime by the May, around May. So either next month or the meeting after, we should get a, a response. Another item, uh, traffic study. The information that we put into the request seemed to be wrong. It bounced back. Do any of the members remember requesting safety mitigations at the intersection of Kalihi and Kauman, Kaumanaiki Street? So from DTS, they said- So from DTS, they said that those streets don't intersect. So if you could provide any other information about the location will be more than, well. Okay, Kaaimanaiki.
Kaaimanaiki and Wailele.
Place and. Oh, Kaaimana, okay. Kaaimanaiki place and Wailele? Is that what you said? Wailele, okay. Okay, yeah, so we'll send that back and see. This one was to HPD requesting more information, more details for HPD when they do their monthly statistics, specifically on violent crimes. And I think, I think the lieutenant did provide a little bit more on that this time. So we'll see if that keeps going and if not, we'll remind them again. This one, last one, this is regarding the CAM four rec center. There was a question about if the current project to demolish and replace the rec center at CAM four housing, is that city or state? So yes, it looks like it bounced around between DPP and DFM. It's not in their jurisdiction, so we'll refer that to the governors or upstate officials. And that's all I have.
Thank you. And if, I don't know if we can take questions or comments right now, but you can always email them. Did you have a comment to? Or was it about the?
Uh, just a correction because he said seventeen-ten Kalih Street, but it's seventeen-ten Kilohana Street. There's, there's no bridge at Kalih. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Kilo, Kilohana Street, is that correct? Kilohana Street. Thank you so much. And since the represent here, feel free to email me the questions so that way, if you have questions now or later on, we can have them answered in the next meeting. But we'll move on to councilmember Tyler Dos Santos Tam. I believe that's Lynn Robinson.
Aloha Chair, aloha Board, aloha Community Members. Lynn Robinson for Councilmember Dos Santos Tam. I know it's getting late. I'll be brief. I've put some information in the chat. There's the link to his newsletter and all his newsletters. May I just check in? Did you folks get the hard copy from the Neighborhood Board Commission? Is that there with you?
Yeah, Lynn, I think I just saw the February ones in the mailbox. So I don't know if it didn't come in yet, but it wasn't there today.
Yeah, I delivered Monday, so. I'm gonna, we'll talk offline about how we can streamline that process so that, to make sure that you get it because the inter-office mail wasn't working either. So we'll figure it out. Thank you for the feedback. So moving on, I've been working closely with community members and Board Member Rojas about this Kilohana, you know, under the bridge situation. It's the encampments, the illegal dumping, the rubbish, all of it. And fortunately, we've been able to move some things forward. It was good that DFM kind of partnered with the state. They got some big equipment out there. And this is still ongoing. I want to thank Board Member for sending me follow-up photos today. So I'm in communication with DFM and they know anyhow that they need to get, you know, that the project continues. And obviously, you know, we'll work with the governor's houselessness, homelessness coordinator, which is great for the state. I know that Hawaii Health and Harm Reduction has already been out there and I know that they'll repeatedly be out there and be happy to partner at any time. And we'll just move forward. It's just something that we will ask for a little bit more patience, but the focus is there. And if we have to, you know, give updates to our portion, which would be anything that's under the city's jurisdiction, daily, we will do that. So if, you know, any feedback from the community is welcome. So if it gets cleaned up and you see it's not staying that way, it is best just to nip it in the bud and please reach out to us and we'll, we'll get, you know, we'll make sure that they know. Secondly, I wanted Board Member Franklin to know that we are now revisiting the subject of getting security cameras into the Kalih Uka Park. There's just been some serious incidents out there, so that we'll be meeting with the director and revisiting that. We hope that everyone can come to an agreement. Actually, Principal Santos said, asked that we do whatever we can. So I will keep you posted about that. I know that Board Member Kumali had, and Board Member Rojas had kind of separate questions. One was about the RPZ zone that will roll out in July. There were some questions about notification in all fairness to the community to be able to give everyone fair warning. So because there is considerable cost involved and we want to be able to let people know so they can plan. So our office will have a notification. It'll be newsletter stuff. But also in May, I believe there will be a mailer to the area affected. And then the Department of Transportation also written into that bill is their part about notification and facilitation for all of that. So I put information, if anyone has further questions about that, you can reach out to them. It's RPZ at Honolulu.gov or there's a phone number, seven, six, eight, eight, three, five, eight. If you want to include that in your minutes, but it's also in the chat. So Board Member Rojas, that would also be where you could go. I know that you had asked about some people that might like to have a, to establish an RPZ zone. So that's where those questions can go. They can tell you the criteria, the process and all of that. Lastly, councilmember is still diligently working on the two bills for the game rooms, Bill fifty-seven and Bill fifty-eight. Bill fifty-seven would create additional penalties, including up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in fines for landlord to allow game rooms on their properties. And Bill fifty-eight would allow greater collaboration between HPD and the Department of Planning and Permitting. So we're asking for the board to consider a letter of support. We think it would be helpful. We're still waiting for a hearing in the zoning committee for this bill. So I think that the Makiki Chair has reached out to several boards. I'm not sure if this board has heard from him, but I can send over a template and an example and also maybe what the Hawaii Kai Neighborhood Board did to support measures to shut down these game rooms. So Chair, that's up to you. If you'd like for me to send that over or if you as a board want to have a consensus, you can let me know. And I think that's all I have. I'll be happy to take any questions back for the councilmember.
Thank you. Any questions from the board online or in person? Mr. Hussey?
I'm hoping that you Chair would be okay with us seeing the template that Lynn is willing to share with us from Hawaii Kai. Though I'm pretty sure that whatever we could do is going to be better than what Hawaii Kai can do, right? We can do better than those guys. I'm just kidding. And Lynn, I love your background. Is that your house?
If you put two, if you put two thumbs up, you get fireworks. So that's for your comment, right on for Kalih Valley.
And are there any other questions from the board online in person? Oh, Mr. Franklin?
Lynn, I would thank you and the councilmen first for moving the bus stop and painting the curve red. And thanks for getting street sweeping back into Kalih. So I see the street sweepers now and they're running around Kalih cleaning out streets. So thank you for that. I think the same time we put in the request for the street sweepers, we also asked, as we talked about earlier, for those parking signs on the east side of Kalii Street to be updated. I don't know what that is because they can't sight if the signs are not visible. So the street sweeper can't go and clean the street because the cars, they illegally park there, but you can't enforce it because of the signs. Thank you.
Thank you for the update. I didn't know about the curb and the bus stop. I, this is what happens. I, this is why I always appreciate everyone's feedback after we put in these requests. Because the departments don't get back and say that the job is finished. They just say that they'll do it when resources are available. So I'm glad and I hope that motivates us to continue to work together. Board Member Franklin, remind, I think we already put in this request, but please, please just refresh me. Is it the parking signs are faded, missing?
The parking signs are all faded. You can't read them. They're just white signs. They're all faded. So if people park there, the police, they can't legally cite them because there's no signs, even though you know you can't park from three to five thirty so that the street sweeper can clean the street.
Three to five thirty AM?
PM, I'm sorry.
And that's right in front of the park?
No, it's all, it's all down Kalih Street from Leaky Leaky where it branches off all the way down. So all those signs are faded. So that's why you're getting cars parking there after three thirty and between three thirty and five thirty. And the street sweeper now is just going down the middle of the street, which is kind of useless. But you can't cite the cars.
Thank you very much. I will follow up.
Thank you. And are there any other questions from the boards online in person? Seeing and hearing none? Any questions from the community online in person? Please come to the mic and introduce yourself and your question, please, and thank you.
My name is Atregah. I'm here concerning the kids of our community. We have a district park with a gymnasium that is not able to use the main basketball court. The problem we have, if the kids playing out of this community don't have rights to get to other places to play their game. So they either normally forfeit the game or they don't get to play. This issue's been going on for three years. They're always waiting for the parts to fix the basket, waiting for the parts to fix the basket. This is the longest place I ever seen people wait for parts for fix a basketball basket. And I don't know if the city council people here play basketball or have kids that play in the community. But I've been coaching since nineteen seventy-nine in this community and it's the longest this gym has been down. Every other gym is operated. Kalih Valley has been down for the longest time. I don't know if you guys ever noticed, you guys are on this community board. I heard this gentleman say this is the voice. That's why he wanted to run. This is the voice of the community. I cannot transport every kid that we play through Kalih Valley because my car is not able to do it. All I'm asking, if you guys can fix the gym, it would help us, help the kids in this community. That's my concern.
Thank you for bringing that concern and I can absolutely take that back and put in a request. Is there a way that we can talk offline so I have very specific details about what needs to be repaired at the gym? Do you want to?
You can always come see me at the gym. I'll be at the gym from three to six. I'm at the gym from Monday to Friday. We have games from nine to twelve on Saturdays. I'm not there Sundays. I go church.
Okay, I'll come by and see you.
See me at the gym, Kalih Valley District Park, nineteen eleven Camford Road. I'll be there from three to six.
To six, okay.
I'll be more than happy to show you what we go on. The other thing I wanted to bring up is that previously when this gym opened up, we had custodians. We had a ground maintenance. Now I'm partially custodian. I'm a volunteer to the community, but I sweep up that gym. Another thing that's broken in our gym is the boxing gyms. It's the most filthiest place if you ever go up to. I hope you guys consider going into that place and look at it because you guys should be the voice of this community. You guys want to fix the community? That's the problem. And then we have a swimming pool in our high school, the only high school in our community that has trees in it. It's the fanciest swimming pool I've ever seen in the world. And it's been down for over twenty years, I believe. But you guys are on the board. What are you guys doing about it? Your gym has been down, the boxing gym has been down for five years. None of you has gone to the boxing gym. You guys care about the community. That's where your kids go to play. Your court has not been put up. But you're on this board.
Thank you. And Ms. Lynn Robinson, do you have a comment or?
No, I, I appreciate, I completely understand your concerns. It does sound like it's unacceptable and that there are repairs that need to get out there. I will absolutely.
I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I'm not looking for understandable. I'm looking for.
I'm good. So I will absolutely come out for a site visit. We'll document and go through everything that needs to be repaired. And then I will put a request in with the Department of Parks and Rec from Councilmember Dos Santos Tam's office.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I'm hoping it's not going to take two years, but thank you very much.
No, no, hopefully I'll see you next week, okay?
I'll be there waiting.
Okay.
Oh, Mr. Franklin?
Sir, first I'd like to thank you, but I want you to know that, you know, I, my kids did swimming. I teach swimming over there, so I taught the kids. I went down there and I took the pictures of all of the gym and the bathrooms because they were the nastiest bathrooms I have ever seen. They were like from nineteen thirty-two. So I submitted all those photos to the city saying that I didn't understand why Kalih Pool in the district did not have that up to date. And I apologize because I saw the renovations going on. And I just assumed when I looked at the bathrooms and stuff that they had also went into the gym and did the gym because they had closed down the gym too, to complete that work. But I want you to know on this board that we did go over there, take pictures of how filthy and how bad the bathrooms were for swimming, how it wasn't modern, it was dirty, filthy, and I thought we would get staffed there. So what I did not do, and I apologize for it, is go back to the gym and make sure the renovations were done, completed. So for that, I apologize, but I also will go over there and look at it because I did send tons of pictures of, and this is two years ago, and asked them, why can't we get the service in Kalii that everybody else get? Why our bathroom was filthy? Why our gym floor is tore up? Why this is what's concerned? And like I said, and when they shut it down for remodeling, I actually thought they had completed that and I did not go back. So I do apologize for that.
The bathroom is still closed in the swimming pool, by the way. They still got boards and construction outside of it. The problem is the city has enough kept with the contractors that are doing the work. So they continue to procrastinate in doing their work. And it's affecting our usage of that particular place.
Thank you for bringing it to the board, sir. We will get on it.
When you do come down, take a picture of the floor, the wooden floor we have. It's going to be gone within a year if they don't treat it. It's termite eaten.
Thank you. And then.
Excuse me.
Oh, Ms. Ross.
Back here on the mic. I just wanted to ask one question. You know, when you talked about the gym, the boxing gym, you know, I represented Hawaii in the national team in nineteen eighty-six. I used to box.
For real?
Yes, I did. So my question is, what can we do to make that boxing gym go again?
Go look at it. Go look at it.
What do you need?
You need to clean it up. You need to fix it up. You need to have the thing active again. You need to clean it up. Go look at it. I'll give you a hundred dollars if we agree to have your house look like that. Go look at it. You asked me what to do. I want you to go look at it, Mr. Ross.
I will look at it and then my question.
But if you say you trained there in eighty-six, I know you.
So.
So I can tell you, if you want, if you want answers, go look at it first. Because I cannot describe how filthy it is to you, but you haven't looked at it yet. But you've been on this board for how long? That's where the kids in your community go to play.
This is my first year.
Okay.
So that's why I'm concerned.
Let's make it a good year. Let's make it a good year. Go look at it.
And I want to know what made it fail?
What made it fail?
Because it should be.
So, Mr. Rojas, I just wanted to say, this is questions for council member. We are asking the, the.
That's who you should direct your question to, the city.
The city.
I'm a volunteer from the community.
Thank you. So you can talk to him on the side if you'd like to.
You can talk to him on the side, on the back and the front, but I'm telling you, direct your question to the people who has a say to fix it.
Thank you. Three to six.
You guys are the voice of the community. That's why you guys decided to sit on this board.
Thank you. Are there any other questions to Councilmember Tyler Dos Santos Tam from the community? Christine, can you come up?
I, I just want to say thank you so much for, for getting that cleanup done. I happened to be working from home that day and we were just furious texting with me and my neighbors, just showing them pictures like, ugh, you know, they're actually removing all these things. But there's so much, they had so much construction under that area that the trucks could not, I mean, they packed themselves like over capacity, the guy told me, and they still had a lot of, yeah, had to leave a lot of things back. But in talking to my other neighbors while we were, yeah, it really made our day. But we're wondering if the, there's, there's a road and the, the bridge on this side, there's a stone wall and bridge on this side has a fence on top of the stone wall. And we're wondering if we could put a fence on the other side of the stone wall because that would prevent them, it would make it harder for them to, you know, move furniture down there and ladders and pallets and all of the things that they, that they build with. So that's my thing. But thank you so much. It really, that was a really, that was a good day. That was a good thing. Thank you.
Appreciate your appreciation. I just wanted to ask you really quick. Whoops.
She's going back here.
Yeah, just, just, um, do you think that maybe you could reach out to me at the office? And then I could meet with you over there and then you, you and I could walk it through, just so I could be.
Happy to.
Yeah, just so I can see if maybe it's city property or it might be state that we need to collaborate with. But I want to thank you and all of the community members because you're the eyes and ears and you're the ones that have given me all of the compelling evidence that I needed to be able to, you know, get the city and, you know, to collaborate with the state and get it done. So thank you. And yeah, so just, my, reach out to me at the office and, and I'll come out and we'll, we'll walk through it. If you want to have other neighbors there, even better.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, how, how do I contact? Oh, okay, okay. Thank you.
Of course. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have one more. Do we have any more questions from the community? Did you want to go up to the mic? So we have Chris Luweli Maga who has a question.
Aloha, I'm Chris, resident here in Kalii Valley. But I had a question. We all know that Kalii Valley parking is very limited. And in my area that I live in, we have, that's right there on Kamanaiki and Violet Street. There's a cemetery there and they have, they have like no parking signs all over. So it's hard for us as community, as residents to come home and try to look for parking, I guess, street parking. But I, and I get it, the, the no parking there is for the cemetery resident, I mean, the cemetery visitors. But we've been there our whole lives and I think they only come once or twice a year. And, and for residents there, it's kind of humbug to illegally park there to come the next day to get tickets every other weekend. We're just wondering if there's a way that we could kind of softly remove the no parking. So kind of, and we, and residents that live in that area, we kind of already have a system, like first come, first served. And if no parking, you gotta come park over here by Kaluuka. But I, this is a question. I know it's a small mani problem, but if it's, yeah.
So Mr. Ikai, oh, Mr. Hasi has a comment about that.
So that's not a mani problem. That's a big problem. Because we all face that all throughout, you know, Kalii, but I think it's a general problem all throughout our city, right? Is parking is really scarce. One, one thing that we're, that we're talking about in our subcommittee on sidewalks and transportation, it's a very long name, is trying to figure out a policy that we could use to take places that currently have like parking that's only for one group of people, you know? And turn that into essentially public parking. So that when it's not being used by someone visiting the cemetery, that it be used by residents. And, you know, it's something, it's a, it's an idea that I think maybe, for instance, if, if, uh, you know, there's, there's, there's excess parking in a lot of places, like parks, public parks, schools, churches, shopping centers, like Camp Shopping Center has lots of parking for a lot of the day, except for the time when it's being used during retail hours. You know, if, if it were possible to have, if, if we could have a policy that would make it easy for these private owners essentially of parking to make their, their parking available to the general public, you know, in an intelligent, organized fashion, I think we would all benefit. And there's places like in Japan where that's what they do is they have strict rules that say you cannot park on the side of the street, which forces private landowners to offer, well, it kind of, it creates an opportunity for private landowners to offer their, their extra parking to the public. And so, you know, they have a little meter or whatever and then people can go park, which I think would be useful for like, you know, for yourself. So anyways, that's one of the things that we're talking about. You should come to our meeting next month.
Okay.
Six thirty.
Sounds good. Just to be a specific other area, because I know you want like specific information. It's the corner of Kamanaiki and Violet Street.
Yeah, I got that. So do you, so you're, do you know who maintains the cemetery? I assume that it's a private parcel.
I, I, I don't understand the question. Sorry.
Do you know who maintains that cemetery? Who, I'm assuming that it's a private parcel, that that, that that parking isn't on, you know, that this would be like some kind of possible private public partnership, like?
Possibly, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. So that's a good thing to find out to, because that's what you, you know, if, if this were ever to be a thing, we could find out if there was any precedence, if this has ever happened already in the city or, you know, anywhere. But it would be good to find out who's, who's, who owns that, the parcel. If there's a private entity there that maybe we could reach out to.
So just one question. So if, if they put up, uh, because before there was like a concrete metal pole that said no parking and then they took it down or I don't know how it got down and now those signs are on the, the light poles now. So is that something that's run by the city or still private?
Um, the light poles might be, might, if they're on the light poles, it might be a city thing. Does it look like they're city? You know, signs? Maybe this, I don't want to take up too much time for everyone else's time. This would probably be good for you to work with Board Member Hasi with that policy stuff. And then you guys loop me in. Does that sound good?
Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any last questions from the board in person or online? And if not, we can move on to the next agenda, which is Governor Josh Green's representative, Deputy Director Kristen Sakamoto.
Good evening, everyone. Kristen Sakamoto here on behalf of the Office of the Governor. I'll make this quick, just a couple of highlights from the March 2024 newsletter. I did drop a link to the newsletter in the chat. So first, the Hawaii Public Housing Authority received approval from the City and County of Honolulu's DPP to move forward with the redevelopment plan for the Mayor Wright Homes. So redevelopment will occur in multiple phases over a 15-year period. And Phase One is expected to begin in late 2025. There's also another article in the newsletter about the two Kalahale that John Miesunow spoke about a little bit earlier this evening. So I would encourage all of you to read about that as well. I had a couple of follow-ups from last month. One was on the status of the demolition of the rec center, which I also noted was part of the city's request. So we did a little bit of digging here and my understanding, if this request or question deals with the Kalii Valley Homes Community Center, that was closed due to severe structural issues and needs to be demolished. So I checked with HPHA and so the status is ongoing because this is a federal property. There are several steps that need to be executed before the demolition takes place. The HPHA is currently in the process of recommending a selection of a professional provider, I believe a design consultant for the project. And once a selection is made and the fee, the amount of the fee is negotiated, what will happen is HPHA will need to apply to HUD, the federal agency for the demolition and disposal. They would need to perform an environmental assessment or environment impact statement and start the demo designs, go through the building process. And I believe they also need to go through the state historic preservation department because of the age of the building. So that's where they are right now, early in the process before they're able to apply to HUD would be the next step. There was another question about plans to build a new community center. And that is the intent. Currently, HPHA does not have the funds to rebuild. But if and when the funds are appropriated, the hope is that a new community center will be built. And then finally, I just wanted to apologize. The Department of Transportation was not available to attend tonight. But if you have any questions, I can take it back to the governor's office for follow-up and try to see if they can attend a future meeting. That's all that I have this evening. I did note the concern from the community member about the Safe Route to School Advisory Committee. So I can check in on that and take any other questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the board online in person? Mr. Franklin?
Yes, thank you. All of that, what you said on the rec center is correct. The residents, yes, don't understand. It's been 10 years for people to make a decision. So they understand the process. They just don't know why it's taken 10 years to get this done.
I understand. So currently they are in the selection process for the design consultant. And that's essentially where they are right now in the process. But yeah, thank you again for the question.
Thank you. And Mr. Hasi has a comment or?
Yeah, I don't want to berate or to belabor the issue, but I, I do think it's, it's worth repeating that this would not be a situation that the residents of Manoa or Hawaii Kai would, would have to endure. You know, there would be immediate repairs. It's like what Fatel was saying earlier about the, the situation with the, the park here. That's, that's a, a problem that I feel like we get singled out. We, we sort of get ignored by the rest of the, by the governmental establishment. Resources are not allocated to take care of Kalii's needs. And on, on top of that, you know, there isn't public housing in, in, in other districts. You know, it's, it's, it's just not fair the way that, that we're being treated. Thank you.
Thank you. And are there any other questions from the board online or in person? Seeing and hearing none. Any questions from the community online or in person? Seeing and hearing none. Thank you. And we'll move on to Senator Donna Mercado Kim.
Hello, my name is Rachel. I'm here on behalf of Senator Kim. Our community report has been emailed out to neighborhood board members and community members that signed up to receive it. Senator Kim is working with the Department of Education to improve the road that runs through Farrington High School. She's also continuing to work on saving the CIP funding for the Farrington Gym that the administration has proposed to lapse and also adding in additional funding to cover an updated cost estimate. On March 5th, the Senate voted on 292 bills to move forward this session. And the bills that were passed cross over to the House. Similarly, the House handed off their House bills to the Senate, where our bill hearing process will begin once again. Earlier, a community member pointed out a couple of bills. Senator Kim also wanted you to be aware of SB 3202. It provides that for residentially zoned lots within urban district, each county shall allow for two, or sorry, at least two additional dwelling units. So basically, this bill will authorize building of two additional units on residential properties. The issue of multi-unit dwellings has frequently been brought up as a concern in our communities. It did pass through the Senate and cross over to the House. So we encourage you to track this measure and provide testimony if you're either in support or opposition, as it could affect the density of our neighborhoods. There, I'll get, I guess I'll go over, since DOT is not here, there's ongoing construction near Golik Ave. The H1 widening project is ongoing until sometime in 2025. And we went ahead and detailed the closures in our community report. And I'll go ahead and open up for questions.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the board online or in person? Mr. Franklin?
I'm sorry, on, on these bills on the extra residents, in these bills, they're proposing that when you build these extra homes, that you provide parking for them. So because we having a big deal with parking now and we're saying you could put two or three more homes on the lot, it's somewhere in that bill that everyone builds a home should provide some kind of parking saying that, okay, there's seven cars in my, for this residence, how are they going to park those cars? If you're just going to cram them in there, if they don't build parking garages or put them three stories? So my question is, why these bills are being proposed? Are they taking into consideration that we have no parking? And that somewhere in this bill, these bills should have whoever's building these houses provide parking for themselves in their buildings?
Sure. I agree. That is a huge concern. So I just searched the current Senate draft and it looks like it does state, these facilities shall meet all applicable county requirements, not including but not limited to building height, a couple of other requirements. Parking is included in there, but because the bill is still in the hearing process, any section of it can be amended at any time by, I'm sorry, by any committee if the bill is heard. So that's why we do encourage you to provide testimony for these bills if they are scheduled to be heard because we, I mean, our office does agree that these are concerns.
Thank you. Any more questions from the board in person? Mr. Hasi?
For the Farrington funds that may elapse, I'm wondering if the senator, I'm not sure if the senator is on ways and means, but if the senator were, were to be able to use a proviso in the budget bill to essentially broaden the scope of what those funds are used for, that, that, that's something that, you know, it's possible within the budget process. So just, I thought I might mention that. Thank you.
Yeah, I do believe that, you know, the funding for this project is a little bit tight. As I did say, she's attempting to add in additional funding to cover the costs for the gym. So I'm not sure that the funding for this project at least would be best used for, you know, additional projects, if that makes sense.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the board online or in person? Seeing and hearing none. Any questions from community online in person? Mr. Sung has a question.
Do you know where Senator Kim stands on HB number 1630 and SB number 3202? Is she for or against it at the moment? Is she for or against it at the moment?
Um, she, so for SB three two zero two, she did have her concerns about the bill. So she did vote with reservations, I believe, when that came through the floor. Sixteen thirty, it just crossed over from the House side, so I'm not sure that she is, you know, familiar with this companion bill, but I would assume she would have similar concerns.
Yeah, I'm just, my main concern about these bills is, you know, increasing density and the neighborhood like Kalihie that's under deserved, right? And it adds capacity to our infrastructure. It's gonna if it takes us ten years to get a rec center built, right? How would it affect our electricity, water, sewer, and transportation added to it? If it's not ready for density? That's my concern with these two bills.
That is a great point.
And if they could just defer to the city instead of the state? That's what I would like.
Okay, yeah, and again, if you have, you know, strong opinions about any of these bills and you want to provide testimony and don't know how, please reach out to our office and I'd be more than happy to assist you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the community online or in person? Seeing and hearing none, thank you so much. And we will move on to Representative Mamizuno. Is May on?
So sorry. Anyway, good evening, everyone. This is Mamizuno and let's go on. Mr. Sung's questions first on House Bill sixteen thirty. And the companion, may not be officially companion, but a similar bill is Senate Bill three two zero two. This bill actually prohibits the city in not allowing them to to erect more than two units per residential area. And the implementation will still stay within counties, so it's just conformity on the state side of the law. And I myself have some reservations on this bill. However, when this was House Bill sixteen thirty was heard in the House, they removed the parking provisions there, so I voted up on it. And however, both the Chairs of Housing and the Chair of Water and Land said they still are looking into some kind of language on how they can protect the communities like ours, like Kalihie Valley who has parking issues already. I know this bill already crossed in the Senate and the Senate version already crossed to the House. And that Senate version will be scheduled for hearing as well in the House. I'll be sitting on Water and Land and I'm hoping that that bill will also be referred to Water and Land, so I can raise those questions that Mr. Sung had provided this evening. And you can also, it doesn't preclude you to turn in your written testimonies whether you are for or against those bills. So when those bills are up for hearings, please, 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 I implore all of you to write testimonies in support or with reservations or opposing the bill. And that's what makes our community great. On a positive note, capital improvements. I requested several capital improvements for our district and I'm happy to announce to everyone that we passed House Bill eighteen hundred, the budget bill today on the floor and there are several schools in this budget bill. I have it here. Though middle school, I'm just gonna make it fast, Kalihie Kokua Valley, Kokua Kalihie Valley rather, and Kalihie Valley Homes also got some money there. The Court Park, former Representative Mizuno put in some money for the Court Park in the past. However, that funds are going to lapse, and so I put in another one million dollars, but this is however needs to be matched dollar for dollar by the city and county of Honolulu. So I contacted Councilmember Dos Santos' office today and informed them that we need to work together and maybe they can push on funding dollar for dollar, so we may be able to work on the Court Park improvements. And several schools as well. Mr. Hasi brought up the Farrington High School earlier, however, on House Bill eighteen hundred with our version, the budget bill. I don't have that there. However, I requested that. I don't know why it's not there though. So for resolutions, this pertains to our district first. I introduced a resolution, House Resolution thirty-six. This is to request the Department of Land and Natural Resources to convene a working group to inform the public about the options available to address the state's rural chicken population. And I'm hoping Mr. Franklin will be happy with this. Second, House Resolution is thirty-seven. This is requesting the City and County of Honolulu, County of Maui and County of Kauai pass ordinances similar to the County of Hawaii's Bill nine eighty-two relating to improving private roads. Like right now, the city cannot improve the private roads as of the moment with the ordinance that we have. So this resolution is urging them or requesting them to pass similar to Hawaii's bill. So that's for improving the private roads. And I also have House Resolution thirty-eight requesting the City and County of Honolulu to conduct a sidewalk feasibility study along Kalihie Street from Kamanaiiki Street all the way to Kalihie Valley Park, which we don't have sidewalks at all. The next one would be to requesting the governors, the governor and the governor's coordinator on homelessness to establish a relocation project to assist homeless individuals with the goals of reducing homelessness, crime, residivism, and taxpayers' costs. And last but not the least, requesting the City and County of Honolulu and Department of Transportation to provide covered bus shelters to all bus stops in Oahu. And that's all the resolutions I have for you guys. I could only introduce five resolutions. So those are the resolutions that pertains to our community. Basically. And with that, I am, oh, I have two House Bills from the ten bills that I introduced that's still alive and crossed over to the Senate, the Senate Bill two seven zero five and Senate Bill two six six two. Two six six two is the Recreation and Education Upward Mobility Pilot Program. It's for the Housing, Public Housing Authority to create youth programs. And that's still moving, that's that crossed over to the Senate right now. And that's all I'm here for, any questions?
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board online or in person? Seeing and hearing none, any questions from the community online or in person? Seeing, oh, Mr. Sung?
So where are you on my two bills that I brought up, for or against?
Like I mentioned earlier during my report, Mr. Sung, it went to our committee, Water and Land, and when I brought up the issue about the parking, they removed that provision there about the parking and they would work on a better language to help alleviate the the concerns that I had regarding parking because I mentioned to them that we are the first in the state that implemented the restricted parking zone as we, the Kalihie Valley is one of the oldest community in the state and we are very dense. However, I also I also realized that multigenerational is already applied to us here in Kalihie Valley. So I told them if this bill passes, it will really, really, really affect my community. I know they've been saying, or this bill originated from the Maui people, but I brought up all the concerns I had. Therefore, during the hearing, I voted up on it.
Thank you.
Thank you. And are there any other questions from the community online or in person? Seeing and hearing none, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And up next, we have the committee reports and assignments. I do see Transportation Committee. If you're ready, is your, actually, I was gonna ask, would you like to add on to your report? Yep, okay. Yeah, so, and also do see the board is interested in creating a social media communication committee. So it'll be on the next agenda. That's okay. Okay, and then, I guess moving on to board business, possible meeting location discussion.
Chair, I can help with this. So the elementary school here, Kaiva, they won't be able to hold us for the next few months. Just they're short staffed with janitor, custodians, so we will need to, I mean, so the baseline meeting location that we have guaranteed already is the Kapalama Hale address. We'll remain on WebEx, but just to, this meetings kind of run long, so I'll let you guys think about other locations that might, that might work. And just send them to me, send me the address. And if you happen to know somebody there, you could send me their name or phone number and and my office will call and we'll find out if we can meet there. But as of now, we'll meet at Kapalama Hale next month unless unless we find something, yeah. Thank you.
I believe that Kira Sakima is another option to?
So I think they were in renovations right now. So we did check with them and they're not available yet, but if they become available, we will. Sorry, not from here.
Oh, KKV is Kokua Kalihie Valley.
It's a community center, health center, and they have a nice internal cafeteria.
Okay, if you want to just send me, just send me an email with that and we'll follow up.
Okay, and if anyone else has other recommendations for locations, please send them our way. And then now we will move on to the approval of regular meeting minutes, Wednesday, February fourteen, two thousand twenty-four. Can I get a motion?
First of all, you have to ask if someone agree or disagree with it, so. Okay, because I'm gonna disagree.
Okay. Got it. So Mr. Hasi approves or gives a motion? So move and any second? Oh, who said second? Mr. Rohas, seconds. Are there any amendments, corrections? For the regular meeting minutes?
Yes.
Mr. Franklin?
I believe our minutes do not meet Sunshine Law standard and I would ask every board member to go to the OIP website and you should go to part two and you should take the class again on our minutes before you approve them. Our minutes, as Representative Board Member McCogge said, our board, our members supposed to reflect who testified in what you said, and our board members are also are supposed to say, if a board member spoke, you are supposed to give the gist of what the board member said. So I will disapprove our minutes until our minutes comply with the Sunshine Law. And so every board member, as I state, should go to the OIP website, go to part two and review a board minutes so that we can get in compliance with our minutes. That's why I'm gonna disapprove our minutes until we do.
Thank you so much. And we will do a verbal vote. So all those that are approved, say aye. All those oppose? Any? Abstain, yeah, any abstain? Okay, Mr. Gotti does abstain. Okay, thank you. And other reports, the CH's report, so just a brief, just in case you do guys, you guys do get an email from me asking for money, that is not me, check the emails to be sure. It should be lea lt at lea lt nine eight at gmail dot com. I made another email to make it simpler, which is lea tumbaga at gmail dot com. That way, it's a little easier to remember. So those are my only two emails. Any other? Check the ads, anyone on this board too, anyone could be be an imposter and asking for money, especially the treasurer or the chair. So just wanted to let you guys know, be safe. And yeah, are there, I did want to note, the next meeting will be Wednesday, April ten, two thousand twenty-four at seven PM at Kapalama Hale or other locations to be announced. Broadcast meetings, neighborhood board meeting aired on Olelo Channel forty-nine on the fourth Saturday of the month at six PM and the first and third Sunday of the month at nine AM. Are there any more announcements? Okay, okay, oh. Yeah, okay, any more announcements online in person? Okay, seeing none, but I do want to thank you, everyone. I'll see you next month. We'll see you guys next month and this meeting is, oh. Oh, Chris has an announcement? Okay.
Sorry, I know the gentleman left, but I just want to say thank you to the board, the board and all you guys' hard work and time. You know, as a resident here, you know, we love to see results and that's what we're seeing. And so you know, we can help the gentleman out with whatever he needs, but you know, for me personally, I just want to thank you guys for working with the government and stuff like that. You know, I know you guys are busy with their own lives, but you guys take time out of your lives, your busy schedule to help our community here. So I just personally want to say thank you. That's it. Thank you.
And thank you, Chris, and hope to see you in more meetings as well. Yeah, and if that's it for now, then we'll see you, everyone, next month. Happy early Easter and this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.